All right, it is 5:30. We're going to go ahead and get started with our pre-meeting. See any changes that were made to the agenda and answer any questions before our six o'clock meeting. First on the agenda is approval of minutes. July 11th, 2022, 5:00 p.m., council work session. July 18th, 2022, 9:30 a.m., council work session. July 18th, 2022, 10:00 a.m., council meeting. Any questions? All right, next set, public hearings. Ordinance 22-4523 approved pre-zoning request. 139822 for Castle Rock Global Holdings LLC. Located south of 3102 Modus Road Southwest to an R5 single-family patio home district. Set public hearing for September 6, 2022 at 6:00 p.m. Any questions? All right, ordinance number 22-4524 approved rezoning request. 139922 approximately 53.44 acres from Ag 1 and Ag 2 to an R5 single-family patio home district. Set public hearing for September 6, 2022 at 6:00 p.m. And those are connected properties. Any questions? All right, ordinance 22-4525 approved rezoning request. 1422 land services from an Ag 1 agricultural district to PRD 7 planned residential district. Set public hearing for September 6, 2022 at 6:00 p.m. That one, what's the Huntsville neighborhood right off, kind of near the airport? Old, is that a PR, is that similar lot sizes?
Talking about old couples?
Yes.
Think that should be somewhat similar to these lot sizes?
I've just had some people ask about lot sizes and I think that's probably pretty close, so.
Yeah, the main thing on that was just slightly smaller lot sizes. The biggest difference is the front and rear yard setbacks are slightly smaller than what people probably used to see. And side yards are going to be five feet each.
And they'll have to give you, y'all will have to approve a plat?
A development plan will be the next step. And planning commission, if they approve that development plan, that's what they'll be held to in their planning ability.
Okay. All right, any other questions? All right, resolution 22-174 approved demolition of accessory structure located at 705 Prospect Drive Southeast. Set public hearing for September 6, 2022, 6:00 p.m.
No changes.
And we think we might resolve that one before the...
We've got our figures correct.
All right, public hear, any other questions? Public hearings, ordinance 22-4522 approved zoning request. 139722 for recently annexed tract of 6.4 acres located at 370 McIntyre Lane. Zoning to be M1A Expressway Commercial District. Public hearing was set July 5, 2022. All right, any questions? All right, resolution number 22-175, and I'm not going to read all those. David, any changes on those? All right, any questions on the weed abatements? All right, skipping to N. Resolution 22-188 approved extension of special use permit from T-Mobile to modify equipment on an existing tower located at 1406 Chadwell Street Southwest. No changes.
Well, that was up as far as that approved their dissection to extend the time to get some equipment. Basically allow 5G coverage in that area.
All right, any questions? Resolution 22-189 approved River Clay Arts Festival to be held October 21st through 23rd, 2022.
No changes.
Any questions? Resolution 22-190 approved 2022-23 Burn Justice Assistance Grant Program Award. Any questions? Resolution 22-191 approved budget amendment for the Highway 20 Bib Garrett Improvements Project.
No changes.
Okay, any questions? David, was there any changes to your...
No changes.
All right, resolution 22-192 approved change order number four for ADA improvements to the Princess Theater.
No changes.
All right, any questions? Resolution 22-193 approved replacement and repair of the undercarriage and rollers for the 2018 John Deere 850K Dozier by Warrior Tractor and Equipment Company.
No changes.
All right, any questions? Resolution 22-194 approved the agreement with Alabama Department of Corrections, North Alabama, CBF, CWC. Any questions? All right, resolution 22-195 award bid number 22-031 for four transit vans awarded to Lynn Layton Ford invoking the local vendor privilege. I have one question on that. Is that, are those bid together or are they, can they be separated?
They were listed in one bid. If you split it up, I guess that would be a much lower dollar price.
Okay. All right, any questions? Resolution 22-196 award bid number 22-027 sanitary sewer extension to Holland Meadows subdivision to Clayton Properties Group Incorporated. Doing business as Southern Site Contractors.
No changes.
Any questions? Resolution 22-197 approved Temple Inc. proposal to remove signals and cater utilities AC proposal for retiring traffic light facilities. Any questions? So that's three intersections, okay. Well, lights. All right, any other questions? Resolution 22-198 approved Bib Garrett Bridge Project completion date change. That's, when, was it April? No, yeah, March of '23. All right, resolution 22-199 approve AECOM SR 20 Diamond Interchange Proposal.
Council President, and I should have contacted you, Mr. Hood. We've learned of the possibility of some grants maybe that we might be able to use here. If we could consider tabling this for a couple of months, we'd think it'd serve the city well.
Okay, so we would need to vote to table, okay, if that's the direction we want to go.
Okay.
All right, any other questions?
I'm good with that.
Okay. Resolution 22-200 declare surplus purge firearms from police department property and evidence room. All right, any questions? That was an addition that had at the end of the meeting.
Well, we called by last week basically so they could sell them to authorized dealer.
All right, ordinance is first reading. Ordinance number 22-4526 approve annexation 37122 for 1.86 acres located south of 3102 Modus Road Southwest. Okay, any questions? Ordinance 22-4527 approve annexation request 37222 for 1.2995 acres more or less located at 3418 Central Avenue Southwest.
No changes. And on that one, I want to remind you that that's the one we were asking. Can we consider immediate consideration so that they can register that joint agreement?
Okay. All right, any questions? All right, we'll get started at six o'clock.
All right, we'll call the meeting to order. Herman Marks will lead us in our invocation and pledge.
Our Father, we are truly grateful to be here tonight. And let's step back and just reflect on how we truly are blessed as a nation and as a people. Even though we think we're challenged in our minds on many occasions, you're still there. You have not moved, and you are there to comfort us and to guide us and to protect us, if only we'll seek your will. We ask now that you be with this council meeting tonight and those that participate, and may they feel your presence as we deliberate as a council and as department directors and other staff. We ask now that you lead and guide and direct us in all that we do. I ask this in your name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Herman. Roll call.
Aye.
Here.
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 All right, before we get into the agenda, we do have one person who signed up for public comment, and Ms. Andrea Hoffmeyer-Wilson. Do you want me to go through the drill?
Yes.
Okay, we'll do three minutes.
How many minutes do I get? Three minutes, okay.
And if you can just say your name and address.
Okay, thank you, I wasn't sure. Andrea Hoffmeyer-Wilson, 1306 Carradel Street. So, thank you for giving me three minutes here at the beginning. I'd like to first start off with saying a big thank you to Lee Terry. He was very generous with his time this afternoon. Yeah, we had some questions, reading through this fabulous new document, so if anybody has not started reading through the zoning rewrite, really, really helpful time that we had. I'm very excited about the five-foot sidewalks? What? That's so exciting. And the other thing that I'd like to point out on behalf of the members of One Duck is, do you know that reading through this, we are about seventy percent of our way to being comparable to the exemplary process in Auburn, the city of Auburn, for how they handle tree preservation and replacement when it comes to developments? So, we've talked about that before. It was documented in a 2009 scholarly article. They're still running strong with their program, but between our landscaping and buffer standards, which is awesome, and it gives all the reasons why we should be doing this, which I couldn't say it better, and our green building incentives, which that has a similar thing where you get credits if you preserve twenty-five percent of your existing vegetation. The only thing is, is that we would need not just a topo submitted, we'd need a tree in topo, because it's really hard to give credits for retaining twenty-five percent if you don't know what was there ahead of time. So, if we could put in a tree in topo instead of just a topo, that would be great. This is also a great time for us to put together a tree board or a tree commission, because remember, in October, the Tree Board Academy, this year and this year only, is going to be in Athens by the Urban Forestry Commission of Alabama. So, that, yea, five feet, seventy percent of the way there. And I would like to also just mention one other thing. We have been having a rash of $285 weed abatement things. So, this is an idea, it doesn't really work when there is a building, a residence, but on empty lots, I've been reading something about in other municipalities, they are doing this thing called urban meadows, because it's in response to the pollinators collapsing. And did you know that the monarch butterfly just got listed as an endangered species? And we are on the southern part of the Appalachian migration path. So, one thing that we could do is we could say, okay, either $285, or we convert you into an urban meadow. Go monarch butterflies. Thank you. How many seconds was that?
That was your most impassioned speech yet.
Well, you know, butterflies, five-foot sidewalks, and seventy percent there to tree preservation and replacements.
Thank you. I would say just thank you for taking an interest in the zoning rewrite, and we do, on that note, there's a, is it August 18th?
August 18th.
August 18th, we're having a, as you probably know, a joint public
Presentation.
Presentation from Clarion that did the rewrite with the council and the planning commission at Turner Searls, we think, that's yet to be for sure.
For sure.
But that'll be out there. But all those type of questions, I hope we have a lot of suggestions and feedback like that, so thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate it. How many seconds did I have remaining?
No.
She stopped it.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, guys. All right, we'll jump into the agenda. I didn't have anyone else signed up for public comment. First, we have approval of minutes. Is everybody okay to take these at once?
Yep.
All right, do we have a motion?
So move.
Motion by Mr. Pepper.
Second.
Second by Mr. McMasters. Any discussion? Roll call. Aye.
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 The minutes are approved with a vote of three to zero. Next, we have set public hearings. Ordinance number 224523, approved pre-zoning request, 139822, for Castle Rock Global Holdings LLC, located south of 3102 Modus Road Southwest, to an R5, single-family patio home district, set public hearing for September 6, 2022, at 6:00 p.m.
Yes, this is a piece that is just outside the city limits, looking for a pre-zoning. This is part of a larger development, a rezoning corresponding with this will be the next item, looking to pre-zone to R5 patio homes, and this was recommended for approval by the planning commission.
Okay, any questions on that? Next is ordinance 224524, approve rezoning request, 139922, approximately 53.44 acres from Ag 1 and Ag 2, to an R5, single-family patio home district, set public hearing for September 6, 2022, at 6:00 p.m.
Yes, this is the larger part of that development that is already in the city limits, so this is just a rezoning, and again, looking for R5 patio homes.
All right, any questions? All right, next is ordinance 224525, approve rezoning request, 1422, land services from an Ag 1 agricultural district to a PRD 7 planned residential district, set public hearing for September 6, 2022, at 6:00 p.m.
Yes, this is a piece on the corner of Central Avenue and Pool Valley Road. This is looking to go with a planned residential district zoning, slightly different, slightly different requirements, like I stated in the work session. If this is approved, the next thing you would see coming from the planning commission would be a development plan for this entire project.
All right, any questions? Do you have any idea how many units they're considering?
Around 200. It hasn't landed on a firm, they're still working on their development plan, but it should be around 200 units.
All right, any questions? All right, then, resolution 22174, approved demolition of accessory structure located at 705 Prospect Drive Southeast, set public hearing for September 6, 2022, 6:00 p.m.
Just here if you have any questions. We're gonna go ahead with the notification process, but hopefully we've been told it will be remedied by November.
Okay, any questions? All right, public hearings. Ordinance number 224522, approved zoning request, 139722, for recently annexed tract of reference 36822, of 6.4 acres located at 370 McIntyre Lane, zoning to be M1A Expressway Commercial District, public hearing was set July 5, 2022.
I guess this is a piece of land that was recently annexed. It is just south of Highway 24 on McIntyre Lane. It's an existing business on the site, and they needed access to our public sewer system, which required the annexation request, and this is just to set that zoning. Like I said, this one is an existing business, and this was recommended for approval by the planning commission.
All right, this is a public hearing, so if there's anyone here to speak on this item, we can speak now. All right, seeing no one here to speak, we'll consider the public hearing closed. Motion by Mr. Pepper.
Second.
Second by Mr. McMasters. Any discussion? Roll call.
Aye.
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 All right, ordinance 224522 is approved, three to zero. Next, we have a long list of weed abatements. It goes from resolution, under resolutions A through M. Does anybody have an issue with taking these as a group? All right, any, do we have a motion? Motion by Mr. Pepper.
Second.
Second by Mr. McMasters. Any discussion? Roll call. Aye.
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 All those, A through M, are approved with a vote of three to zero. All right, moving to N, resolution number 22188, approve extension of a special use, special use permit from T-Mobile to modify equipment on an existing tower located at 1406 Chadwell Street Southwest. So move. Got a motion by Mr. Pepper.
Second.
Second by Mr. McMasters, if you want to tell us what your
Good afternoon, everyone. This is an application for an extension for T-Mobile. T-Mobile was approved a special use permit in February of this year, and it will expire on the 20th of this month. They have not been able to start construction. They proposed to start construction on the 15th, and it's a, it'll take They proposed to start construction on the 15th, and it's a, it'll take probably three or four weeks for them to complete, so they will not be able to complete the construction during the terms of the special use permit. So CMS has reviewed the extension request and recommends approval.
All right, we have a motion by Mr. Pepper, second by Mr. McMasters. Any discussion? Roll call. Aye.
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 Resolution 22188 is approved three to zero. Thanks, David. Resolution 22189, approve River Clay Arts Festival to be held October 21st through 23rd, 2022.
Yes, this is the annual River Clay Arts Festival. This resolution, if approved, grants the authority to use the grounds of City Hall for that festival. So moved.
Motion by Mr. Pepper.
Second.
Second by Mr. McMasters. Any discussion? Roll call. Aye.
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 Resolution 22189 is approved with a vote of three to zero. Next is resolution number 22190, approve 2022-2023 Burn Justice Assistance Grant JAG Program Award.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Suzanne Grants Administrator. This is an agreement between the city and the county to split the JAG funds for 2022-23.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Pepper.
Second.
Second by Mr. McMasters. Any discussion? Roll call. Aye.
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 Resolution 22190 is approved three to zero. Next, we have resolution 22191, approve budget amendment for the Highway 20 Bib Garrett Improvements Project.
Mr. Mayor, Council, Carl Pruitt, City Engineer. This is just a budget amendment to increase the funds for the right-of-way acquisition for our Bib Garrett overpass project.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Pepper.
Second.
Second by Mr. McMasters. Any discussion? Roll call. Aye.
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 Resolution 22191 is approved three to zero. Resolution number 22192, approve change order number four for ADA improvements to the Princess Theater.
Yes, Mr. President, Council, Mayor, this is just a change order that the Princess has requested in our remodel of the ADA compliance. They're just requesting that we move some, where the architect drew the seating, they wanted to move it, so we're just, this is that change, so we're just recommending approval.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Pepper.
Second.
Second by Mr. McMasters. Any discussion? Roll call. Aye.
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 Resolution 22192 is approved three to zero. Resolution 22193, approve replacement and repair of the undercarriage and rollers for the 2018 John Deere 850K Dozer by Warrior Tractor and Equipment Company.
Good evening, Wanda Tyler Landfilling Recycling. We have a 2018 850K dozer that's in need of a new undercarriage. We went out for bid. We had no responses, so I was instructed to go into negotiations with someone that could do the repair. We spoke with Warrior, and we negotiated a price of $45,959.39.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Pepper.
Second.
Second by Mr. McMasters. Any discussion?
So will this
You sure you got the funds to cover this?
Oh, yeah.
Only people want finance with that.
So will this essentially get this back in? I guess I had some questions how we try, we're trying to replace it, now we're, because there were no bids on replacement, we're just gonna fix it.
No, there's no, there was a, we went out for bid in order to, for the undercarriage.
For the undercarriage.
Yeah, not the actual machine, yeah.
Got you, got you, got you.
It's just for the service work.
Yes, just, yeah, to repair it. And new tracks, new rollers, everything.
Okay. Any other discussion? Roll call. Aye.
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 Resolution 22193 is approved three to zero. Resolution 22194, approve the agreement with Alabama Department of Corrections, North Alabama, CBF, CWC.
Yeah, this is our annual contract with the Alabama DOC, Department of Corrections. This is for the entire city. We pay $20 a day per inmate for additional labor.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. McMasters. We have a second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Pepper. Any discussion? Roll call. Aye.
Aye.
No.
Resolution 22194 is approved with a vote of two to one. Resolution 22195, award bid number 22031 for transit vans awarded to Lynn Leighton Ford invoking the local vendor privilege.
Yes, Mayor, Council, I'm Charles Booth, the president of the city. This was for three vans with a tow package and one without, the three with the tow package for parking wreck and one without for use services. And we got two responses, and the pricing was then limited to allow a local vendor, local vendor privilege.
All right, we have a motion. So moved. Motion by Mr. Pepper.
Second.
Second by Mr. McMasters. Any discussion?
So, we were originally looking for three, and we're trying to be a little bit proactive with the one for use services, or we needed four?
Just trying to get DYS up to date.
Yeah, I think talking to Kyle, he said that they knew Brandon was going to request another van, and so I think being proactive with the three, the three are for the beautification committee for
I believe Brandon has one that has no air conditioner now.
Okay.
Prohibited to get it repaired.
Yeah. All right, any other discussion? Roll call. No.
Aye.
Aye.
All right, resolution 22195 is approved with a vote of two to one. Resolution 22196, award bid number 22027, sanitary sewer extension to Holland Meadows subdivision to Clayton Properties Group Incorporated, doing business as Southern Site Contractors.
Yes, sir, this was, this bid was conducted by P. Wright McAnally, and they got one response at a total of $7,287.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. McMasters.
Second.
Second by Mr. Pepper. Any discussion? Roll call. Aye.
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 Resolution 22196 is approved three to zero. Resolution 22197, approve Temple Incorporated proposal to remove signals indicator utilities AC proposal for retiring traffic light facilities.
Yeah, this is the cost for Temple Electric Indicator Utilities to help us remove three traffic signals, one at 8th Avenue and Gordon, one at Prospect and 8th Avenue, and one at Somerville Road and Medical Drive.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Pepper, second by Mr. McMasters. Any discussion? Roll call. Aye.
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 Resolution 22197 is approved three to zero. Resolution 22198, approve Bib Garrett Bridge Project completion date change.
Yeah, this is a change, a time change order for a Bib Garrett Bridge Project, which would push the completion time to March of '23.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. McMasters, second by Mr. Pepper. Any discussion? Roll call. Aye.
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 Resolution 22198, approve with a vote of three to zero. Next, we have resolution 22199, approve AECom SR20 Diamond Interchange Proposal.
This was a proposal to do engineering work, environmental studies, to prepare us for, I guess, the new RISE grant, construction next year. And based on current, or information earlier, I'd like to request tabling this until, I don't know, whenever y'all decide you want to table it till a couple of months.
I'll make the motion to table it.
All right, we have a motion to table by Mr. McMasters, second, second by Mr. Pepper. Any discussion?
Yeah, I think this is the right call right now. Simply because there could be grants out there. You know, I appreciate us being proactive in that area, but we got a lot of funds we could spend a million dollars on on this side of the river instead of building an overpass until we get the other one finished.
Yeah, I would, my only comment is I do think this is a priority for, the simple reason of there, especially the property on the south side of 20 there. If we did have a development, especially residential, it's gonna be tough in that area without some type of access like this from a safety perspective. So, I know there's been activity, you know, Dan's had calls, and people interested in that property, we want that property to develop, but I think this is very much needed if it were to develop, especially with residential, people, especially people trying to go west on 20, out of that property. So, I would still like to see some urgency around this project, of course, if there's grant opportunity like Mr. McMasters said. But we certainly need to be proactive, because how long do you think a design would take? A year?
Yeah, six to nine months, yeah.
In construction, it's probably two years.
About that, 18 months, based on our current one being built.
So if we get a call, or the property owner gets a call.
Twenty, yeah, 30 months.
You can build houses a lot faster than an overpass.
I agree.
All right, that, as you said, I definitely support the tabling because of the opportunity to find maybe some grant opportunities. But this is, needs to be a priority with some sense of urgency around it. All right, we have a motion to table by Mr. McMasters, second by Mr. Pepper. Any other discussion? Roll call. Aye.
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 The motion to table is approved with a vote of three to zero. Next is resolution number 22200, declare surplus purged firearms from Police Department property and Evidence Room. So moved. Motion by Mr. Pepper.
Second.
Second by Mr. McMasters. Any discussion? Good.
Thank you. Good evening, Council, Mayor, Rick Archer of the Police Department. We're seeking to dispose of 740 firearms from our property and evidence room. These have accumulated over the past two decades. Unlike typical property and evidence, this is unique in that they have to be transferred to a federal firearms license dealer. Very few dealers can handle a transaction this magnitude, so we're in discussions with a couple of different companies that can do that.
All right, any discussion? Roll call. Aye.
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 Resolution 22200 is approved three to zero. Next, we have ordinances. First reading, ordinance number 224526, approve annexation 37122 for 1.86 acres located south of 3102 Modus Road Southwest.
This corresponds with the pre-zoning request that was earlier in the agenda. You usually see them separated more in this one because of time constraints. You're seeing them considered together.
I'd make a motion for immediate consideration. Okay. What is it, not this one?
Because of the pre-zoning.
Oh, it's the next one. Hold on, sorry. Never mind. Whoops.
Do I need to disregard this motion? No, sir. I withdraw my motion. Whoops. All right, any other discussion? All right, next is ordinance number 224527, approve annexation request 37222 for 1.2995 acres, more or less located at 3418 Central Avenue Southwest.
Yes, this request comes seeking to annex into the city limits. They would like their children to be able to go to city schools, and because of the urgency, school starting next week, they were asking if we could consider immediate consideration so they can get their children applied for the school year.
Good. Now, I'd like to make a motion for immediate consideration.
Second.
We have a motion for immediate consideration by Mr. Pepper, a second by Mr. McMasters. Any discussion?
I think it's pretty great that we're seeing folks wanting to annex into the city so they can, their kids can attend Decatur City Schools. I think that shows the trajectory of the schools and our city, so I'm excited about this.
Any other discussion? This is for immediate consideration. Roll call. Aye.
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 Immediate consideration is approved three to zero.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. McMasters.
Second.
Second by Mr. Pepper. Any discussion? Roll call. Aye.
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 Ordinance 224527 is approved three to zero. Our next council work session will be held on August 8, 2022 at 5:00 p.m., and the next regular council meeting will be held on August 15, 2022 at 10:00 a.m. Anything else from any directors? Mayor?
I do. I might recall about a year ago, Dr. Caroline Swope, who leads our Historic Preservation Commission efforts here in the city, came up with the idea of having a coloring contest for elementary age students and using historic sites around the city to be colored. And it was a lot of fun, I think. Had some of those that were recognized as first, second, third place type winners. And a big to-do was made about it, and with that
That was actually the hardest decision I've had in two years.
They received national attention for this effort. The National Alliance of Preservation Commissions honored the Decatur Historic Preservation Commission with a Commission Excellent Award for Best Practices in Public Outreach and Advocacy at their recent forum in Cincinnati. So anyway, I wish Caroline was here today. Alan, you are. We work closely with Caroline, and we're very proud of this award for the city.
Agreed. Anything else?
Sir.
Thank you, Mayor. Anything else from council? All right, we'll stay in the journey. Thanks.